Yeah. Okay, moving along to public comment, and we do have a public comment tonight before I'm going to read the guidelines real quick. Time for the community to address the board with comments and questions. Each community member addressing the board has five minutes. Once you've been notified, your time is up. Kindly step away from the podium. Public comment will be for 30 minutes with no more than each subject lasting 20 minutes. Please understand this is not an engagement time. The board will consider your comments in its decision. For those comments or questions requiring a follow-up response, the board president or superintendent will follow up. Okay, so we have Ryan.
Hi, my name is Ryan Wowe. I currently attend Westmont High School, and I am currently a junior. I'm here tonight to address my opinion on e-learning days for snow days. I think we should have e-learning days on days that we have snow days. How's it fair to us students that we have to keep on adding days towards the end of the school year? I don't want those extra days. I don't think anybody does. Let's walk down memory lane, shall we? Remember when we were learning during COVID? It was e-learning during COVID. We were, excuse me, we were able to e-learn during COVID. Simple as that. It's so funny because we were able to e-learn back then during 2020, but we're not able to do e-learning now, 2024, almost four years later, even with the snow days. It makes no sense to me whatsoever. I don't want to be coming back in June because if we do, we are going to go past Memorial Day, which we haven't done in almost two years. People already have vacations planned out, and if you keep on adding the snow days, they're going to have to scramble to get that moved or even canceled. Other school districts in the surrounding areas have been doing e-learning days, including my one friend who currently attends Downers Grove North. Many schools are doing e-learning days in place of the snow days, except for Westmont. They have a plan situated, as you guys really don't. I'm asking for you to please make a plan to have e-learning days in place of snow days. Again, it's not fair to us. It's not fair to our parents. And I bet it's not fair to the staff that have families. Please consider, please consider my statement tonight as I am asking you to please add more e-learning days as I think these are more beneficial and useful than snow days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, moving along. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, or no, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the January 9th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2024 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Stick with it, guys. Okay.
We should have paper scissors when it comes down to this. Who's going to say it?
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. One, personnel recommendations, Cynthia Arnold, special education teacher, and Amanda Wilson, special education teacher. Two, approval of the January 2024 expenditure report. Three, ratification of the December 2023 regular payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Decidi?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're moving into discussion, and Nadine is going to review our e-learning day.
Good evening, Board of Education, and Mr. Balderman. I am here to review or provide feedback on our e-learning experience that we had last week. We sent out a parent survey once we got about 200, a little over 200 results, and we sent out a, two surveys for teachers. And based on that, those results, I'm here to kind of recap that, those results of the surveys. So I'm going to talk about the parent survey, talk about the teacher feedback, and then make some recommendations for the future of e-learning. The most parents thought that the remote, I'm going to kind of switch gears from calling it e-learning to remote learning because even though we kind of had like, have like PTSD about. Because we didn't use an electronic form to interact with the students in under, fifth grade and under. In their case, it would be, it wouldn't be called e-learning, it would be remote learning. So when we asked the parents, what was your experience with e-learning? Was it generally positive or generally negative or no opinion? The majority of parents said that e-learning was a positive experience. About 15, no, I think it was like, yeah, 15 parents or so said that it was actually, they really actually enjoyed it. The elementary parents' comments were varying about, I kind of, I liked interacting with my student. I liked spending one-on-one time with them, and I really enjoyed the activities that the teachers put together. Those that believed that e-learning was generally a negative experience, I have some specific feedback about that. And there was a number of people that really didn't, didn't express an opinion one way or the other. We asked parents if they would prefer if we had more e-learning days, remote learning days, versus extending the school year. And most parents said that they preferred if we had more e-learning or more remote learning days. And 34% preferred snow days, and there were a number of parents that just said, children need to be in school every day. So, just a few. The parents that comment, gave specific comments, there were a number of parents that said that they wished that we had like a more rigorous experience for students. They, they wanted more, they wanted the assignments more enhanced. Some of them specifically mentioned that they wanted Zoom interaction for, particularly for high school and junior high students. The elementary students, on the other, the elementary parents, on the other hand, we had 10% of our parents that highlighted the difficulties of managing their own jobs and trying to manage their children's packets and packets and learning experiences. But that, you know, that, that kind of situation is difficult to mitigate. And thankfully, a number of our parents appreciated our teachers and all the hard work that they, that they demonstrated with all, with the activities that they designed. That was, we really appreciated that. The teachers were required to support students online. They, they had to be available for interaction through email or chat rooms and, and and if students needed to interact, they had to be available. Most students completed their work, even in the cases where the activities were optional. And teachers, most teachers reported that they heard from few parents or students. And most teachers overall felt like things went smoothly and were happy with this, happy that the students finished, completed their work. So I kind of summarized the requirements of what e-learning or what remote learning requires, like what the elements are, and we have to ensure that there's, and verify that there's at least five hours of, five o'clock hours of instruction or schoolwork. It doesn't mean five hours during the school day, though. So students have until 9:00 PM to finish their work. So for those students who have working parents, they, it, it does provide a flex, flexible experience. There's no, there's no sort of guideline in terms of ensuring that the students are online between 8:00 and 1:00. So that's kind of important because that, that might mitigate some of those issues with working parents. And also, if we're clear on those expectations, parents who were confused on why we didn't have Zoom meetings for students, they aren't required. Interacting, interaction between the students and the teachers are not required. What is required is the teachers have to be online and ready to help students if they need it. So the non-electronic materials must be made available, which we did do. And we didn't, we don't, we didn't send home devices for kindergarten through fifth grade so that we had electronic, or non-electronic packets for them. And providing staff with, staff and students with adequate training is important as well. So if students were to go on soon, we would have to provide training for them in advance. So that being said, those are what we have to do. So that being said, for the younger students, I think it would be, it's very important to provide clear expectations for remote, remote learning and let parents know that, for example, the packet that we're providing for them would be necessary for them, for students to do. But the optional activities are indeed optional, and some of those are like play-based or enrichment activities and other things that students might have the opportunity to do if, for example, the packet was, you know, something that they could finish really quickly. And ensure the work, ensure the work that we send home can be done independently and that it's not too difficult for the students, which kind of flies in the face of the request for the work to be rigorous. But I have some thoughts about that in a minute. And providing, thinking about considering creative solutions to support working parents and so that we try to mitigate some of that stress in those households. And make sure that we don't make assumptions about the electronics that folks have at home. I had a number of friends that sent home packets and paper, but the enrichment activities had to be printed out. Well, I know that based on technology, people are not buying printers anymore because everything's in the cloud. So print, don't, you know, just to ensure that everything is available through paper. Thinking about the amount of rigor and the kinds of activities that we're providing for students. The activities were either practice, reinforcement of concepts that students have already learned, providing background knowledge, play-based activities, particularly for the younger students. Those kinds of activities, we designed them specifically because they would be something that students would be able to do independently. We aren't able to differentiate for, for students because some kids could finish that packet really quickly and other students struggled and, or, you know, parents had to kind of struggle to keep them on task. That's just a challenge of not being in school. So one thing to keep in mind, and going back to sort of those options between whether or not we would do remote learning or we would just say, we're just going to call snow day and we're going to have days at the end of the school. At the end of the school year, if we go beyond Memorial Day, those days in school are going to be enrichment activities, practice, independent work, enrich, play-based activities. So it's kind of a wash. You're not, you're not able to give students new material to learn. We're not going to teach kids new, new lessons or assess their, their standards for remote learning. The same, and at the end of the school year, after report cards are done and after the seniors and the eighth graders are out of the school, we're not going to be able to do, you know, new material as well. So the kind of learning that they would engage in for both, for both times would be kind of a wash.
Right.
If that makes sense. For the older students who have access to devices, and it's also important to know that we know which families in our district don't have internet and we provide for them hotspots. So internet or devices is not going to be a deterrent. The same kind of activities were provided for those students, and it's really important to provide clear expectations for accountability, turning in work so that everybody understands that, that, that we're collecting or we are holding students accountable for getting that work done. And assuring, ensuring that we are consistent. So one teacher wants the student to turn in the work by the end of the, what would have been the period, and one, you know, like, which was inconsistent with other students, other teachers. So we kind of have to do a better job of articulating and making sure that we're consistent in our expectations. And so that, you know, the experience is the same for everyone. And then also talking about the possibility of providing more live access to teachers through a video conferencing. That's kind of a pretty easy, I mean, that was pretty cut and dry in terms of the feedback. What questions do you have?
Can we talk about it for three hours? Can we make it till 9:00 o'clock tonight?
No.
No?
I invited our friend to stay.
So, so just, just in touch of, just to kind of, so, because there's some, some history with this specifically. So during COVID, and this is for the public mostly because we were all here. During COVID, remote learning was covered under the emergency declaration. So when the emergency declaration was set to expire prior to COVID, the district did not have an e-learning policy on file. So January 22, and the resolution to approve an e-learning kind of policy for the district was approved by the board, and that policy, it's not a policy, sorry, it is a resolution, was approved in '22 and essentially has to be filed and re-approved every three years and on file with ROE. And that covers up a lot of those, it covers a lot of what was in Nadine's presentation for the expectations. We asked that, at that time, the board did, asked that we do one day of e-learning, see how it goes, because we're a unit district and we were very PTSD at that moment of remote learning and understanding how it works for kindergartners all the way up through 12th graders. So we asked that we do one day and get feedback from staff and families, administrators to understand how it went, what we can tweak, and if we want to move on. So that's essentially what we are, that's kind of the history up until now. And then that is what we are discussing. So we're discussing if we want to, and then there's an action item after it to approve, if we want to approve any additional e-learning days for this school year. The resolution does not specify the number of e-learning, or remote days. I'm sorry, I'm going to write remote. Because the resolution is like boilerplate.
Does the, does the state limit us to five days, though?
That's what the resolution, yeah. Because that's just, that's just for everybody. Like, we fill in, we can't change.
Okay.
So the.
We can only do five days.
Yeah. So, but the one-day piece was not a change to the resolution, that was a verbal from us. Yes. So.
Okay.
Discuss.
So.
So I have a couple of questions. Thank you for putting this all together. And for, I always wish, and I'm sure everybody wishes, that we got a little bit more response from the parent survey, but.
203 days, though? I was like, holy moly!
Right, I'm shocked, too.
I was about to jump out of my seat!
Important to know is, is that all the responses that we got came all at once. So it wasn't, it wasn't like we didn't give.
Within five minutes of the email going out, they were ready.
Because it's, it's a Google form, it's super easy to fill out, and the people who filled it out had opinions.
Yeah.
So it was a good, it was decent representation, though.
Right.
Because it was all across the board. We had a, it was, it was evenly distributed between us.
Okay. I would have to go back at the forum. I did not do the forum because my kids weren't with me on that day. They were with their dad, so I told him to fill it out. But do, did, did they have to select what school they were at?
Yes.
And so have you guys also disaggregated it by school to figure out? Because I have to imagine that some of the feedback, like, maybe the rigor comment is more for the high school and not the elementary. I don't, I don't know, but I just think that could be.
The junior high and high school were more, the rigor comment was more rig, they wanted more rigor. There were some elementary, not, but mostly, mostly the junior high.
And that's just one example. I just think that, I so appreciate what you said, Nadine, about.
And I can, I can provide for you the feedback, which we can, you can then draw through. But I went through those, that feedback, the written feedback with a fine-tooth comb.
Oh, no, I trust you guys. I just think.
I can tell you, like, how many people from Miller wanted to be on Zoom?
Right, 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 right. Yeah, I think that's great. And I think I so appreciated when you said that we need to articulate our expectations. The one thing, I, I think e-learning is such a great solution. I'm really happy that we have it. I do think, and I'm fine honestly with like more days, it's kind of a work in progress, though. And I don't feel super comfortable that we don't have like an e-learning slash remote learning plan articulated and available somewhere where you have that consistent, like, when our assignments due. Because that gets really tricky when it's due at the end of class for this teacher and then this time for this teacher, and it just causes a lot of problems.
We have to.
Yeah.
We can't make it this time for this teacher and this time for that teacher. The other thing, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but, but relevant to your comment is we give students till the next day to do, to finish their work. So in the handbook, so the next time that they attend. So, yeah, they do, and we need to be clear about that.
Right. I just, I think that will be helpful. A lot of the other schools that have e-learning plans have it articulated. And I think for us, the other important thing to do is articulate the difference between e-learning and remote learning because our K through 5 students are doing remote learning and our 6 through 12 are doing e-learning. And what does that mean and what does that look like? Because I think if people are clear on what those mean and what the expectations are, that will help clarify for me as a parent what my child should be engaged in. So I just think, you know, and we, we don't know what we don't know. So we had to like try it out to figure out what to do. I guess the only other piece of information that, and you mentioned accountability, that I didn't really see specifically in the presentation is, because I see accountability as engagement, engagement not meaning, again, like, I'm meeting with my teacher on Zoom, but like, I did complete my assignment. It said most students completed their assignment. But like, that's where I'd like, I guess, more specific numbers and data. And also attendance, because the high schools, if, and this is where, again, it's tricky for us because we're a unit school district. So the high schools that have e-learning plans typically have some type of attendance check as well for verification that the students were there. So I don't know if we have that for the high school. But I, but what does that attendance piece look like for elementary school? Can it just be, I turned in my packet the next day?
Well, for elementary, that is.
That's considered the attendance?
That's the attendance.
Okay. And the state, that's fine by the state? We don't have to have some like Google form completed? What do the high schoolers do for attendance?
The high schoolers, they, they, the completion of the work within that timeframe would be indicative of their attendance.
Okay, and all we've got is just that most of them did it, but we don't have.
I, I, what the question that I asked was in terms of completion, assignment completion, did 90 to 100%, 80 to 90? So I didn't ask.
We do have those numbers.
Yeah, I do. I, like, in that respect. I didn't, I didn't ask the question on whether or not all students were in attendance. I didn't ask that question.
No, but you said you gave them an option, did 90 to 100% complete it?
Yeah. So.
So do we have, like, I guess, what's the number of teachers who selected 90 to 100 versus the percentage of teachers who said?
I, I do have that in the spreadsheet. So my sort of like summary of that is that when you looked at the, the answers, most teachers selected, over 70% turned in their work. So like, 90% of the teachers, no, I would, yeah.
That's, yeah. For me, that feels like an important piece of data. I guess I just wish we had that number.
Yeah, and I, and I can actually aggregate that for you better, and I can send it to you.
Yeah, because to me, that, that's the most important thing. Are they engaged in the learning?
Yeah.
So something more than most would be, if it was 90% of teachers who said 90 to 100, awesome.
Yeah, if 90% of teachers were probably over 70%, but I'll get those numbers for you. Okay, what else?
I appreciate how you said it's a wash.
It's a wash.
That it's, the, the, the remote learning is equal to that last, my brain's on summer, learning.
I think it's better than those days.
Yeah, in some, in some respects, it is better because the kids are engaged in learning that, that's relevant to what they're doing now. They're reviewing concepts, they're doing enrichment activities that's relevant to the standards and the units, unit plans that we're doing right now. So it is, it's not, I guess it's more than a wash. It's better.
Right, yeah.
At the end of the school year, they're doing enrichment activities and review, but we're not.
Yeah, no new lessons, no continuing lessons, yeah, correct.
And once again, I just, like I said, I said this already, but we can't teach new concepts. Like, we tried to do that over COVID, and it, you know, varying results. But we, you know, we can't expect students to learn in the same way. We do a much better job. I mean, we do the best job when students are in front of us. And we do, you know, obviously, we're award-winning, we, we're, we have excellent teachers. The e-learning is, is a way to mitigate the student, the disconnection between students and teachers and to mitigate some, some, some of that loss that we would get if kids hadn't, weren't with us.
Right.
Provides for them opportunity, the, the younger kids provides for them opportunities to give their teachers a window to what they're learning, you know, because they have, they, they're one-on-one with the parents. And many parents, many elementary parents said that they enjoyed. So it was kind of fun to see.
Nice. And then depending on where we go, let's just add more to the website, a tab, remote learning guidelines, like, just so it's right there.
We have to, we have to work with our staff as well, so, yeah, that's a great idea. Well, yeah, that's, that's absolutely necessary.
I want to thank you for expressing, you know, that we do give out hotspots and devices, you know, so everybody does have access that needs access. That was a concern of mine. From the parent feedback, the negative feedback, is there any common themes, anything we could do to change opinions?
The common themes were, the really common themes were the ones that I, I put up there. There's other things that are of interest, but like, some, nine parents said, thank God you didn't make my kid go on Zoom. That's not really statistically relevant, but for those people, that meant a lot. So a few parents, 10, said the work was too hard. But then 20% said the work was too easy. But I will share with you the spreadsheets of feedback. So it's all anonymous, there's no names attached, so you guys.
My biggest concern with my, the completion and engagement, again, I think it's like post-COVID PTSD. Like, the kid who just gets lost, falls through the cracks on that day and just like does nothing and doesn't check in with any of their classes. So even if it's a small percentage of teachers or a small percentage of students who are lost, like, what are the steps to engage those students on those days?
And, and it's.
And it's one day, not?
Yes, it's a day.
A year.
And the ex, right, it's a day, and the stakes are, I mean, it's, you're not comparing it to COVID because the stakes are not high like they were during COVID. During COVID, it was like, all right, we have to get prepared for the future, and that's what the purpose is. But to be clear about what the purpose is, what the goal of the experience is so that everybody kind of enters into it with that same common understanding.
So I think that, that process, right? What's the process discipline moving forward for remote learning days, right? What is the goal? Because clearly, it's different goals from 6 through 12, as it is K through 5, slightly different goals. Or expectations, maybe, is a better way to say it. Expectations for the students, families, and teachers.
Is it the delivery? Is it the delivery model?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you did, so you did mention that we get Wi-Fi hotspots.
Yes.
How, we, we know which families don't have Wi-Fi. How do they get those? Is this like a December fifteenth, they go home with Wi-Fi hotspots because we're entering into winter? Like, how do we do it?
Ongoing, the social, typically it's a social worker that'll, that will alert us. And we have s- a few hotspots for parents at Manning, where we don't expect kids to um, do their work on their computer. So it's not just a high school and junior high thing. It's for any parent, any family. And typically, it's um, the principal or the um, the social worker that let us know and we give it to them. We're right, and we just have a, we have a box of them and we just give them to them. Turn them on and give them to them. So it's easy.
Okay. I mean, I'm just thinking like, if we had called school today for the ICE, right? We didn't know that there was going to be ICE for whatever. How do we get that on days?
Well, those parents, I mean, those hotspots have been distributed like already. It's not.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. Those hotspots are in parents' hands now and they, we, they, they're available to them at any time. They can ask for them at any time. And we've had, we have several hotspots that have been with the same family since COVID.
Wonder, that's what I, that's what I was really like.
Sorry.
Wanting to understand is, do they have them today? Like just, because it's a just-in-case, right?
Well, it's not just that, yes, that, but don't forget, we do um, a no, a, a great deal of communicating with our parents through email and e-newsletters and all that. So it's really nice for parents to have access to internet. For that reason.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think that I, I looked at this day from, um, from our equity workshop a couple of weeks ago from, from an equity perspective, really, like to that point of those kids not falling through the cracks. You know, if we're going to say that no more than five, no more than five days and every day does matter, then we got to make sure that the kids are. So creating some type of process around um, our students with IEPs and 504s so that we know. And, and maybe it's a, maybe it's a box check, right? Like, because we all have our meetings. Any parents that have 504s and IEPs all have the meetings, right? A box check on that form of like notify in case of remote learning or needs to be, family must be contacted in case of remote learning. Or family would like to be contact, just something, and then, so we're able to follow that up also.
This is a, this is a good, good information. The case manager, I got feedback specifically from case managers and these are the things that happened. And I can't be specific because I don't know. It was, it was, it was anonymous as well. So a, a special ed teacher put together some materials that were specific to that student and their goals, books and a handout and sent that home. So that, those, that, that special ed teacher, you know, interacted with that student before e-learning. The case manager, um, for the older kids, they called or contacted or emailed or did something, made contact with those students. Where some, some, for the most part, students weren't expected to make contact with the teacher, but the special ed teacher did indeed a good job. So we do, our special ed teachers did make accommodations and did do something that was out of, out of the typical for students, which I think is important, which kind of gets at you.
Yeah.
So yes, that, that did happen.
Yeah. And like, you know, I, I think all of it is, is the process discipline around it. Next time we have a remote learning day, if we so decide to move forward, which I think that the um, the community clearly said. Right? What is the process discipline around every, because, because I think this was really wonderful, eight, to have two hundred families respond within a matter of minutes. And, and I think there's a lot of things, right? That survey was four questions. It was simple. It was very easy to do. And from a survey perspective, that makes it repeatable. That makes it real easy to be like, hey, we had a remote learning day on Tuesday and Wednesday morning, you know, the survey goes out, tell us how it went so that we can keep on tracking. Like, are families really enjoying this as we keep going on? And I think to Justice's point on the engagement piece, right, the, the most, that's hard. Give me a number, right? And I'm not asking you to give me a number today, but I'm just saying, I connect with a number more.
We have a number of students that we can't, that we hit, they have to really, we have to really struggle to keep them engaged.
Totally.
When they're in front of us.
Totally. But my point on that is, let's create some type of survey for our staff that is as simple as the parent one was. My students were engaged seventy, ten percent, right? That we can, and, and so that we can keep tracking, right, and keep seeing that like our engagement is there. And, and what the engagement is at every single different grade level is, is not, is going to be, is going to vary. But if my, if, if my kids' teacher said seventy percent of that class was engaged, I'm going to believe they were engaged in their own way, right? And I'm going to believe that that teacher understands what it, what the engagement is, right? My point is around that process discipline around like, what do we do when we're, because it, especially because it happens so rarely.
Yeah.
To be honest, we haven't had one for two years.
The other, the thing that I would recommend is that we have a more clear process to collect information around that and then to have, and to Mr. Donio's point is that we want to minimize the situations where kids just aren't there. But, but um, I didn't collect data on this, but I'm most, I'm going to believe that the students that are not engaged in remote learning are also difficult to engage in face-to-face. So we have, for the most part, very engaged students, very hardworking, accountable. They care very much about their learning. And so that's why we had such a high number of kids who were there.
Yeah. I, I mean, honestly, I'm not as concerned about the kids that were engaged as the kids that weren't. Because those are the kids that, that we, you know. But yeah, so I think it's pretty clear. The only other thing that I was a little bit um, unsure of, the optional and the, and the not optional pieces.
That was in elementary.
Well, no, no, no. I mean, we talked about that, which I get. But the five hours of work? Like, can you talk to me about that?
Five hours of learning.
Okay.
Five hours of learning can be, is, is, there's a lot to five hours of learning. So, and this includes, if you think about elementary students and some of those optional activities, play-based learning is really important. So a, a lot of those choice boards and even some of the things that they assign to the, the older students, including building a snowman and all of the math and the physics around that activity. So five hours of packet work is not what was meant in that. And five hours of classroom where you sit in front of the computer for five hours, that's not what's meant. It's five hours of learning. So that includes reading a book, doing an activity, do, engaging with, you know, collaborative, engaging with friends. So that is important to know, that it's not, we don't expect students to be sitting in front of their computers or with a pencil in their hand for five hours, which is, and I read like one comment about a t- a parent who felt it was unfortunate that their child was sitting with their packet when their friends are out playing in the snow. That's, you know, go play in the snow. Men come back. So, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I, I think for me, that comes back to the goal and the expectation around what it is, right?
Exactly. It's what's crystal clear is that we need to be very explicit about the communication.
And as, yeah, and especially I, and it just came to mind at the younger grades because you typically have newer parents there, right? That haven't been through, I don't know. I mean, I'm a, I'm a check-the-box parent. Like, give me the list of things you need to do and I'm going to make sure it gets done. There's like no optional for me, but if you tell me it's optional, then I can tell my kid. But, and there's lots of people like me. So, yeah, clarif- it, a lot of it goes back to that. How do we clarify that expectation? How do we clarify that goal? So, so my ask is that as we continue this, if we decide to continue this, that we do that, that we do that work and check up on it.
Yeah. I think, and I don't think we need to do, maybe people disagree, a parent survey after every time. But I totally agree about like continuing to get teacher feedback on.
Information about.
Yeah, yeah, just so, just so that it can be refined. Like, I think we move ahead and then we keep refining it um, by getting that feedback.
The parent feedback for me is because we have to keep reapproving this every three years. And being able to see that like our parents are, are consistently saying like, more than half, right? Almost seventy percent either is positive or neutral, right? Seeing that number year over year for something that is so easy and it's an easy.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm definitely not opposed to it. I just think.
That's my thought on it is that we have, because we have to keep.
Yeah.
Approving, I want to keep that finger on that.
I just, for some reason, I thought we were just doing it, like the feedback piece this one time because we were going to improve more. But like, I think we consistently keep doing it.
The whole concept will become more routine.
Yeah.
And obviously, a number of our parents, twenty percent of the respondents, which work from home, so. It's, it will become more, just second nature. Anything else?
Jack took a breath.
Well, thanks, Dr. Norris, for the thorough and quickly put-together uh, presentation. So, yeah, we just had this last week and we already had the data, so it was very clear and concise. And two to one, the parents said they had a satisfactory experience. So um, the thing that, I'm, we don't have a board meeting again for three weeks. And we, so what we're asking for is that the board would at least give us the opportunity to have a few more e-learning days possible. That's up to the board. We'll be very judicious. We were one of the few schools that didn't call a day-to-day, so. That shows that we're not just saying that. We really mean it. We want our students in school. But it's possible in the next few weeks that we will have another weather-related uh, situation that may not make it safe for kids to come to school. And then right now, our only alternative is to extend the school year. So we will be judicious, but we are asking that the board, based on the community input and the teacher feedback and your own wisdom, at least give us some latitude uh, that we will exercise very judiciously. It can't exceed four.
Yep. So the motion is, is, the next action item is open for, um, we can adjust the number of days up to four.
And simultaneously, so I think everybody is called for, we will flesh it out and make public the expectations and file through on some of the recommendations that Dr. Norris came up with.
What do you guys think?
Are we voting right now?
We're not voting. We need to know what number we're going to put in the motion to vote.
Oh, got it.
We can put in for four more.
Yeah.
Four is the max.
Vote learning days.
I just want to be clear, I hope to God we don't have four more days.
If we're going to approve more, just approve all four of them.
Yeah, so if there is some kind of fantastical weather event.
Right.
I mean, we've had nothing the last two years, so we're due.
It gives us the latitude, but we will not, will, hopefully we use zero. That is really the intention. We may need to use one and then we can do that and not extend the school year. And as we.
And not have to come back to us and ask for another one.
Yes, exactly.
Well, we don't want it one by one, like.
Yes. And as we discussed, I don't know, the, the, these days are going to be at least as quality as what we're going to be facing later in the year. So we would ask for four, but be very judicious about how many we use, with the goal of using zero and only use them if we absolutely needed to.
And thank you for mentioning again the refinement of the overview and some other data. So that's helpful, I think.
I would be good for two more, just based on the weather and what we've been seeing, in my opinion.
Me, honestly, I'd be good for four, because I trust Jack to be judicious with their use.
Same, four.
Four it is.
Four it is.
Okay, yeah. And I think on that goal piece, uh, or the expectation piece, just mentioning somewhere in there that the max we're allowed to take is five per.
School year.
Illinois, whoever it's per. That's not us saying that maximum is five.
Do you also include, because it's not just weather-related, there's other like act of God things? Is that what they call them still, right?
That earthquake.
Well, at emergency, yeah. At all the schools. Because the schools can have, an individual school can call an emergency and not have to extend the school year. But if it affects the whole district, it has to be, yeah. But something in there that it's per, that it's maxed at five. Just in case we do get there, that it's clear from the beginning that five's all we can do and then we're coming past Memorial Day. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okey-dokey. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve up to four additional e-learning days in lieu of emergency days in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Donio?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Okey-dokey. Just one action item, so.
You have to say the resolution has been.
Uh, approved?
Yes.
Yeah? Resolution approved? Passed?
Passed.
Passed. There we go.
I need the list of what I'm supposed to say.
Thank you for speaking, Ryan. I love when high school students come.
Thanks, Dr. Norris.
And thank you to all the families that filled out the survey.
Yes.
Yes.
Love it.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Well, to continue in this trend very briefly, uh, we were able to have school today in, in great measure because our custodians were out there literally at three AM salting and taking care of their lots and our sidewalks and everything. So Scott Russo, head of our uh, outside building and grounds, and Eric Burquist were our two custodians who were there at three AM, starting to, to pave the way so we could have school today. And the entire CUSD two oh one custodial staff who stepped up today at five thirty in the morning to get our schools ready to be open. We're very grateful for the work they do every day. But on days like this, they really are, are difference makers. So thank you to them. We have uh, Miller Elementary kindergarten open house, which is Tuesday, March nineteenth, from five to six. Parents and children are welcome. So that's the kindergarten open house at Miller. The incoming ninth grade night, uh, which is Thursday, February fifteenth, from six thirty to eight. Boy, it would be great to have a hundred percent attendance there. I just tell you, it's such a pivotal night. It's the day that we welcome in our new students and to have them present. I, I don't know how you could miss that, quite frankly, but we, six thirty on February fifteenth, the high school staff will welcome our new students to the building and get them acclimated. And it's uh, it's just a great.
It's good information. I have freshmen now, good information and uh, they walk them around the building. I know most people in the district have been in the building, but they've been in the commons, the gym, media center, that's about it. But yeah, they get them around the whole building, show them the second floor, show them where everything is, answer questions. It's a good night.
To get to learn there's a second floor.
Yes, there is a second floor.
Besides that, I mean, we continued very hard work for, um, from our teachers, our staff and our students. And at the next board meeting, we're going to have our quality review led by Dr. Braun with some really in-depth information about student performance in the first semester. And uh, the other thing that we, we're having some uh, good performance in attendance. But, you know, we, we really need that. We had the winter break, we had an additional five-day break. Now we need people in school every day. It's so imperative for our students' learning. And we're tracking some very good progress with attendance, but we need to continue it and not let up so our students can get the most out of the great education that we provide to them.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, board reports.
Can I cover high school? You can cover.
Sure.
Reed, Reed's?
I'll do my best. I didn't do good last time.
It's been fun evenings and events at the high school. We just had senior night for the girls. Basketball team slash wrestling that night. And then we have the boys coming up, but also is the booster fundraiser that night. Come on down to the high, spend a weekend at the high school. It's a whole weekend of events at high school that, that, that weekend in February on the second. Raffle, the boosters provide a lot of things that the coaches need that are not available through funding in the district. And come on out, have some food, watch a basketball game, watch our alumni get inducted into the Hall of Fame. And come on out, have some food, watch a basketball game, watch our alumni get inducted into the Hall of Fame. And there's a lot of fundraising stuff there. So come on out, February second.
I thought that basketball game is not at the high school. I thought it was away.
What? Now how are they going to induct during halftime then?
I don't know, but I feel like we talked about that at Illinois Reed's, which brings on to the next board report. Illinois Reed's is February third at the high school. Um, it's going to be just amazing. We've got eighteen Illinois authors and illustrators that are going to be there, talking to people about their books and, um, we've got some great speakers lined up. Um, Anderson's Bookshop is going to be there selling, um, all the authors' books. And the authors are going to be there signing books as well. Like it's going to be a really cool event. Uh, ten to two, uh, we have a couple of, we have a lot of sponsors and we also have some local restaurants that will be there. Um, Tapatio, Uncle Bubbs and Zazo's Pizza, as well as our boosters are going to open up their concession stand for drinks. So it's going to be, uh, covers all the things and books, which is going to be wonderful. It's going to be a super good time.
On that note also, Hootie McReeds is going to be out and about in town.
Oh, Hootie.
Hootie, Hootie McReeds.
Named by Miller and Manning students. It's very cool. Little tie donated owl. Um, any other board reports? Okay. Uh, no public comment. So moving on to future, future meetings and, uh, events. Manning McTeacher Night is this tomorrow, January twenty-fourth, four thirty to six thirty PM, um, at the McDonald's on Ogden.
Two twenty-five Ogden, cause someone pointed out, there's that other Ogden one.
There is that other, yes. Um, I hear that there might be some very special guests there. I hear there might be an opportunity to purchase a little Hootie, but, um, you know, you have to show up to, to find out. Um, Policy Committee meeting has been finalized for January twenty-ninth, six PM at South School. Illinois Reed's, February third, tended to at Westmont High School. There is a BPAC meeting, February sixth, at six PM at Manning. Um, CUSD two oh one elementary PTO meeting is February sixth at seven PM. Uh, Manning has its grade level concert. This is going to be the second and the third graders. Uh, no, yes. Yep. Uh, February eighth at six PM, Westmont High School. Uh, our next board meeting is February thirteenth at six PM at Village Hall. And then of course, we have the incoming ninth grader night for parents and students, February fifteenth, from six thirty to eight PM at Westmont High School. Uh, there is no closed session and no other communications. So the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.